Okay, it's six o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order. If everyone would please stand and we'll have to pledge allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, roll call.
Chair Chester has an excused absence tonight. Vice Chair Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Hicks.
Here.
Commissioner McHouston.
Here.
Commissioner Milde.
Here.
Commissioner Mullins.
Here.
And Commissioner O'Brien.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. If anyone in the audience would like to address the planning commission tonight, there's some slips in the back of the room. Fill it out. You can deliver it up front here. If you're going to address one of the items on the agenda tonight, put that item on there. If you have a general comment or a public comment, we will take that first. So that being said, do we have any public comments?
Yes, we have three public comments tonight.
Okay.
First up, I'd like to call Kim Nelson.
Yes.
Hi, my name is Kim Nelson, and I am here in support of the project being requested for the Rancho Mobile Home Park to build a wall along the Avenue J side of their of their park. Currently, there's a chain link fence there about four feet tall. It's been a problem for the almost four years that I've lived there with people breaking through the chain, hiding behind the trash, block walls for the trash. It's really unsightly. They've done a really good job of addressing graffiti, fixing the fence over and over and over. I've watched this, you know, for three and a half years, and they do a really good job. They've got good lighting there, but it's just a problem. We have a lot of housing-challenged individuals that are walking up and down the street who go in, break through the fence, or go in through a place that's been broken in, and people drop their trash off there, you know, alongside, inside of that fence there. And I think that something like that would be really an asset to the area. I think it would be an asset. The homeowners that I've spoken to along there, my neighbors, are in full agreement to having something like this. I understand the request is for a six-foot wall. That would really be an advantage. Something smaller than that, really, people are just going to climb over it. It would be so easy, just put a bucket there and climb over. So something like that would really be an asset in that area, and I hope that you will consider that request. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ben, are we having, are we going to be hearing something in the future on this, or is that something that staff is taking care of?
If they are requesting a six-foot block wall in lieu of a four-foot, that would normally fall under a minor variance if it's within the front yard setback. In that case, it would only be staff-level approval. It would not trigger a planning commission review unless it was appealed, and so normally would not come to you guys for review at all.
Okay, and you'll let the member of the public?
Yeah.
I understand that. Okay. Next item?
Next, we have Craig Johnson.
Craig Johnson. I live on Avenue J, right across from where the wall we're wanting to build. I've been there 22 years, and that the fence that's up there now has been a problem for 22 years. The park tries to mend, and as fast as they mend the fence, people come at nighttime and cut holes in it, go in there, do whatever they're doing. The security for a block wall, especially for the park, would be great, and it's it's just unsightly. They just can't maintain it. It's it's just an old, worn-out fence that's been cut multiple times. When the wind blows, strong winds come out of the north, and their trash dumpsters are right there along that fence, and the park does a really good job trying to stay up on cleaning up the trash. But when the wind blows out of the north, like it does a lot, it just blows the trash all over the neighborhood. I've got out on the street myself and picked it up, and you just can't stay up on it. With a wall there, the dumpsters would be right on the south side of the wall, which would be a windbreak, and it would really lessen the trash blowing around a lot. It would just, it would, it would benefit everybody that lives on the street and lives in the in the park.
Okay, can I can I interrupt you there for a second? We're not hearing that item tonight, and that's not on our on our agenda, and my understanding that's a staff-level item that will be taken care of at staff unless there is an appeal to that. So we don't have any decision-making on that item there. That will be at the staff level. If there is an appeal, then it would come to us at the planning commission. So I would ask that you address those concerns with staff, and hopefully that can get worked out at that level. Because right now, it's not in front of us and won't be in front of us if that gets resolved at the staff level.
Yeah, I'm trying to see. I don't think the variance request has even been submitted, so I don't think there's a project in place for that, the the subject wall at this point.
Okay, so there's nothing we can do? I mean, and I appreciate your concerns and that, and all of us do up here. But right now, our hands are tied because there's nothing in front of us on that item. I would, like I said, I would suggest you address that to staff, and hopefully that gets mitigated at the staff level before it gets pushed any farther.
I understood that's what we were doing here tonight, but I must have misunderstood.
Yeah, no, that will be at the staff level and speak to the planning department, and they can assist you there in what you need to do.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Rich Hess.
Hi there. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Richard Hess. I'm the general manager for the Holiday Rancho Mobile Home Park. And the purpose of us coming here tonight was just to kind of bring it to your attention. We know you guys all can't do nothing about this project. But we feel a six-foot wall is real important on the backside of our property for safety, security, stop the homeless, like other people said. And we've been been to the counter at City Hall and been told we could only do a four-foot fence. And I think Ben might have already answered my question, is that we need to go to him and file for that variance or what have you. But our goal, only goal here was not to ask you guys to vote on anything or do anything. We just want, you know, to bring it to attention, maybe bring it to staff, to know that we really like a six-foot wall there. We really think it would be beneficial to us, to the J Street residents, and for the city in general. So I think we accomplished our goal. We got our attention. I think we'll go in tomorrow morning and talk to the planning staff and and figure this out, how to do a variance or whatever it takes to get it done. Appreciate your time.
All right, thank you. All right, consent agenda. We have the approval for the planning commission minutes of March 19th of 2025. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. We accept the minutes.
Second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed?
One.
Okay, then we have that noted. All right. Do we have any disclosure or ex parte communication? Tonight? Okay. I will be recusing myself on item number three tonight, as I have have conducted some business with some relatives of the owners of that project. So I'll be removing myself when we come to that project. Staff. Item number two.
Thank you, Honorable Chairman and Planning Commission. Today bring before you case number 23-088 and 089, a conditional use permit and major variance for the development of a business park in a general commercial land use district. The proposed project consists of 47 individual two-story business-office units with six interior floor plans ranging from 1,540 square feet up to 2,990, including a live-in work-on-site component allowing six of the tenants to live on-site on the second floor of their assigned unit. The project includes a major variance for a 90% reduction of side yard setback, providing a one-foot setback in lieu of the required 10-foot setback. The applicant is Tech Properties. The conditional use permit, or excuse me, the site is located on a vacant 5.7-acre parcel on the south side of Yucca Boulevard. It is currently improved with a non-conforming residence and outbuilding, which are vacant and in disrepair. The site has been regularly tilled for weed abatement and generally slopes from north to south. The street improvements have been previously constructed, although will need to be modified to accommodate the drive approach proposed as part of this project. The parcel has a general commercial land use designation and has a planned development Chapman Heights Golf Course to the north, Floodway to the south, general commercial vacant and undeveloped parcels to the east, and single residential and general commercial land use district with a mix of residential units and general commercial units to the west. The conditional use permit includes the demolition of the existing structures on-site and the construction of 11 new buildings with 47 units and 119,564 square feet of development. There are six building types, A through F, with 189 parking spaces provided throughout the site. The site provides perimeter and parking lot pocket landscaping, as well as a 30-foot drive aisle that provides a loop around the site to provide access to each of the units, and is a 30-foot loop as it's designed to accommodate larger vehicles and their turning radiator. The operations of the site are proposed as a speculative multi-tenant flex space to be leased out to individual contractors. The site has been identified by the applicant to include uses like HVAC repair, electricians, graphic design, vehicle tenting, plumbers, and other similar uses. Excuse me. However, the final tenants would be evaluated through an anticipated replacement to the business license process, which will be implemented through an upcoming development code update. The site will include six units that include a live-work component, as previously discussed, to provide site security, as well as an amenity for the tenants, which is permissible under the caretaker housing provisions of the development code. The architectural style of this site, the site is proposed on Yucca Boulevard. However, the proposed location of individual units have varying visibility, given the length of the site. The site overall features a utilitarian design with CMU construction of contrasting gray and dark gray features, and bands of black, tan roll-up doors, red awnings, and bronze windows and doors. And the units facing Yucca Boulevard include an additional elevation, including faux windows and a pop-out with awning. The floor plans, as previously discussed, range in size from 1,540 square feet to 2,990. Each unit includes an office warehouse space and small upstairs storage area, although the six live-work units replace the storage area with a studio. Each unit includes a warehouse and loading, a storage yard and loading area. As a part of the site, a preliminary landscaping plan has been proposed. That landscaping has been designed to complement the building and to provide a landscape buffer between sensitive uses and along Yucca Boulevard. The plant palette includes a variety of ornamental trees and shrubs, consistent with the city's citywide design guidelines, with a perimeter fence that will be a mixture of block wall and tubular steel, as well as the exterior wall of the buildings. And it does include a wrought iron gate at the entry. The proposed project also includes a monument sign, which per the Yucca Development Code, all new freestanding signage must be reviewed by the planning commission. The sign is proposed to be a total of six feet tall, although the sign itself is four feet by 15 feet, four inches, and is proposed at the entry of the site at the northwest portion. Currently, the monument sign denotes the tentative project's name, but is subject to change at the owner's discretion. However, the overall design of the sign will not change. Tenant-specific signs will be reviewed through the building permit process, so for each of those units that wants to have a sign, that will need to be reviewed separately. The major variance aspect of this project is for a one-foot setback at the northwest portion of the property, highlighted there in red, which is a 90% reduction in side yard setback, which will allow the applicant to accommodate the building, parking, and larger drive aisle, and to reduce the potential for nuisance loitering and increase site security. The variance is isolated to the portion of the western property line that's adjacent to the neighboring commercial parcel. Additionally, the general commercial land use district specifies that the side yard setback, that a side yard setback of at least 10 feet is required along one side of the project, although no particular side is required, and as such, as such, the applicant could have applied a zero-foot setback to this property line if it weren't already applied to the opposite side. The reduction in setback applies to less than a third of this portion of the parcel. And that that reduction allows for, again, the larger drive aisle for the larger equipment and vehicles that are anticipated for the site. Again, the building walls also act as a perimeter wall, and so having that adjacent to the property line did make sense for the applicant as far as site design goes, leaving that one foot for any maintenance of graffiti and things like that without needing to negotiate an easement from the neighbor. Similar properties have received variances when the building is used as a part of the perimeter wall. Additionally, there are other substandard side yard setbacks that are noted within the staff report. Based on the 119,000 roughly square foot of the commercial development on 5.7 acres, with the credit for the demolished 2,423 square foot home, the project can be expected to generate $666,966.80 in development impact fees, using the current fee schedule as follows on the screen. Notices of the project were sent to all property owners within 300 feet of the site. Further, the city initiated AB 52 tribal noticing and published a notice of intent in the Yucca News Mirror on March 28, 2025. Two responses were received in response to the noticing, one indicating that they were in favor of the project, but that they had concerns about drainage. That will be addressed through conditions of approval of the project, which require a WQMP to be in place. A separate neighbor requested information about the wall along the eastern property line and similarly indicated his support of the project. Said it was a good-looking project on the phone with me, but wanted to make sure that his concerns about appropriate screening and walls along the eastern property line were incorporated and provided to the planning commission. A mitigated negative declaration was prepared by our on-call consultants and compliance with SECA guidelines, which determine that all impacts could be mitigated to a less-than-significant impacts. No comments were received during the public review portion, with notable measures including a pre-construction biological surveys, buffers from adjacent oak tree and waterway, measures to reduce noise and vibration, tribal and cultural mitigation, including an onsite monitor, treatment plan, and procedures for inadvertent discovery. I'll also note that as a part of the packet, we saw today that there were a couple of miss, in the traffic analysis, there were a couple of, while the analysis was correct, there were a couple of areas where, like a greater than or less than were correctly applied, and so we have, we have gotten that updated and have that provided for you today. None of the analysis itself has changed, and neither has the outcome as far as impact within the initial study and mitigated negative declaration. So it is staff's recommendation that the planning commission conduct a public hearing and approve the conditional use permit and variance request, subject to the conditions of approval as contained in the agenda report. Review, and if considered acceptable, approve the architectural design and conceptual landscaping for the proposed project. Adopt the findings for the conditional use permit as contained in the agenda report. Adopt the major variance findings as contained in the agenda report. Adopt the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting plan, finding that mitigation measures and standard measures and procedures will reduce the potential level of environmental impact to less-than-significant, and direct staff to file a notice of determination. You've got the site pictures there. I'm sure driving by, you guys have seen this structure. It is Seen Better Days, and I know the applicant is eager to kind of remove that blight from the city. These are the recommendations that staff had. I am here if you guys have any questions about the project. The applicant is also here if you have any questions from them. That concludes my presentation.
Okay, I have a question here. I'll just start off with the letter from Mr. Farmer. That's the letter you referred to on the eastern wall?
I am Mr. Farmer, so the letter was from Mr. Land.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I'm sorry, yeah, Christopher Lonzo.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah, my apologies there.
That's good.
Any other questions for staff? Okay.
Christian, on the the units, a couple of questions, but one on the units with the housing units and more, the livable units.
Is it going to be plum for that to be future, or possibly future to have all of the units livable?
That's, my understanding is that those that aren't livable are set up as storage area. We don't have that granularity of where plumbing is going to be at this point, but I don't think so.
Yeah, it's just kind of an unusual project with six livable. That's not really, that's kind of more than you need for site security.
It's a big site. It's, you know, 5.7 acres, but yeah.
One gate, but so I guess with that, just a question, just curiosity, I guess, school fees collected on those units?
On those six, yeah.
Yeah, okay. And then the other one is water retention. I don't see any design for retention basin or anything at this point.
Yeah, so it's not a basin. It's underground storage. It should be somewhere within that. They've got drains that go underneath the asphalt and then move generally south, and then they have an outlet that goes to the flood control district property to the south.
Yeah, usually those aren't underneath the asphalt, though, but.
Yeah, it was, yeah, I agree.
So as part of their conditions of approval, they will be submitting a water quality control plan, and that will have to meet the requirements that are set by the county, so they won't be doing anything that is outside of those requirements, and so they will have to capture their water and pretreat their water before it exits the site.
Okay. And and the block wall that's referenced in in this letter to you, Christian, what block wall is that exactly? I'm sorry.
It's a six-foot CMU block that's in between the units. So again, the the units on the eastern portion of the property have a zero, zero lot line.
Right.
So they're directly on the PL, and they have a CMU. And then in between each building, there's also a six-foot, it's actually 6'2", because it's got a decorative cap on it, block wall along the western portion of the site. I think they're actually using, along the part that doesn't have the modified setback per the major variance, they're using, there's a 10-foot landscape buffer, and then, again, the buildings, and then on the other side of that, they have wrought iron fence or.
Okay. And I just want to say, I appreciate traffic report. I've never seen one before.
So.
The traffic study. I guess the last, you know, to me, it looks a lot like motorhome storage, which I guess is one of the allowable uses, not that that's good, bad, or indifferent, but but yeah, it's an interesting project. Thank you. Other questions for staff?
I'd like clarification. The six-foot wall that you're talking about, can you point it out on the on the graphic?
Yeah, so the wall's not called out on each of the site photos, or on each of the site plans, but the, so here are the buildings that have the zero lot line, and then here is going to be a six-foot CMU block wall. Zero lot line building, block wall, all the way to like here, and then it goes to wrought iron.
And what is the, what's the concern in the in the document you just provided?
I had called him to follow up on that, and he just wanted to make sure that there would never be any funny business of, you know, them changing the plans after approval, which we wouldn't allow them to do either, but he just wanted to make sure that his concerns were voiced. He didn't say on the phone that he thought it was a good-looking project and that he was happy to see it moving forward, but yeah, he just, so I was like, are you sure you want this to be provided? Because there is a wall provided within the site plans, but yeah, he said he wanted.
So his concern was he didn't think there was a wall there, that it would be open space?
It was unclear to him. And so when I called him, I kind of explained, yeah, there is going to be a wall there. He was satisfied with that, but he still wanted to make sure that his concerns were brought to the planning commission.
It sounds like he wanted just to, for the record state, make sure that there's a wall there, whatever gets built.
Exactly.
They made sure that the wall happens.
And it's going to be six feet, and that's per the code? So no variance is required, only, it's a zero setback, but that's, you're allowed that, right?
Yeah, along the side yard, they're able to do that, yes.
And the the major variance that's being requested, that's on the east side, is that correct?
It's on the west side, yeah.
The west side, and the tenant or the owner on that side made a comment? What was that comment?
So the other comment actually came from this property owner, or I don't think they submitted anonymously. It was it was from this property owner, and they had concerns about drainage affecting their property, which, as Katrina mentioned, is going to be they're conditioned to have a water quality management plan that addresses, I think, the first hour of a hundred-year flood event. Correct me if I'm wrong, Katrina?
Yeah, so there are a couple of components of it. I think the one that is probably most relevant to their concern is that this site cannot let any additional water off of the site versus pre-construction. So with, basically, it has to match the volume that's coming off the site to pre-construction conditions, so we wouldn't see additional water. That's just part of the requirements of the water quality management plan, so they have to capture the water, pretreat it, and then they can let it off the site. But the amount of water coming off, the volume, cannot exceed the existing condition.
So the water's going to be treated on-site and sent out the back?
That's correct.
Into the flood channel?
Assuming that they get a permit from flood control, that is also one of their conditions. They do have to reach out to flood control to make sure that they will allow them to dispose of the clean water. That, I can't think of an instance where that hasn't really been allowed, but it is under the purview of flood control to make that decision.
And pardon my ignorance on the treatment. How is that, is that part of the underground?
Yeah, so there's a couple of ways to do it. The most common way would be an above-ground basin. Basically, you would have a big bowl of dirt or grass that percolates down, that pretreats the water, so once it exits the site, excuse me, it's clean. In this case, I believe they're doing an underground treatment system, so it'll be similar. There'll probably be gravel on the bottom of it that'll percolate through, so that'll treat the water before it exits the site as well.
And then to help answer the question, the vacant property here, no one from there reached out to the city on this project.
Thank you.
Comment? Yeah, comment? So I read over the material, drove by the property. I'm grateful that the worn-out houses will be removed. That's terrific. And talked to Matty to get a little clarification on a couple of stuff, and the the length and breadth and depth of this report is amazing to me, because I built a house, and I know there's some hoops you have to go through, but to put a building on this property, I mean, it was, it was awesome, all this stuff, including tonight, this traffic impact analysis, including the Indian. Including the Indian, what'd you call that thing? Tribal, cultural, whatever, paleo west. I mean, to do all of that, I don't know if there's any T crossed or I dotted that hasn't been covered with this project. So I'm grateful and I'll make a motion, but I don't want to cut off, you're the boss tonight.
We're not time, it's not time for a motion.
Very good.
We'll see if we're going to hear from you at the end.
Very good.
Okay.
Hey, Mr. Vice Chair, I do have one question for Ben. On that, the request for the major variance, whether it's that one foot offset, I think I'm saying that correctly, in your little red square, is that going to prevent or preclude anybody from building, future building in that, in that area?
The neighbor could all, could go all the way to a zero lot setback if they wanted to, to kind of take full advantage of the lot. They could also align on the other side, I guess, to the other, the western side to have a zero lot setback too. But no, it wouldn't preclude them from doing any work.
Okay.
Yeah, most likely because of the development over there. Trying to pull up, they'll want, if you were being strategic with your site design, you would actually probably want to do a zero lot line on that side. And then that way you could take advantage of the open space there. Just because this site here is a relatively smaller commercial zone site. And so you'd want to maximize your land availability and so you could capture that, conceal it, reduce the maintenance costs for both individual properties and then take advantage of the space you have. So if I was to design a site, I would go zero lot line on that side.
Other questions to staff? Okay, hearing then, does the applicant like to address the commission?
Do you guys have any other questions regarding the project? I mean.
This is the applicant. You want to state your name, you want to state your name and address?
My name's Glenn Schmidt. I'm the applicant representative of Tech Properties.
Sorry Glenn, can you just speak a little bit with the end of the mic?
Was that, was that better?
Yeah, because we, we report everything inside.
Oh, okay. So again, it's Glenn Schmidt, representative for Tech Properties, the owner of the project.
Yeah, Mr. Schmidt, I do have one quick question. When I read this, when I read this, the scope of the project, it kind of was intriguing because I've never really heard of a business area that is allowing residential business owners to stay there as well. Is this based off a concept from somewhere else or is this?
No, this was our, our initial concept. A lot of live work is kind of a popular thing, but not, this is more going back almost a hundred years to where you used to have the cobbler that had, you know, lived above his, his store or the merchant that lived above his store and that kind of concept. So that's, that's what we were kind of going for. You know, small individual startup contractor type that maybe is single, doesn't have a family, needs a little apartment. It's hard to have a business and an apartment or a business and a house. And so we just thought it was an option that, you know, could work.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, question in there because you have six residential units in there, but I believe you're designating two of them for security?
That's, that's correct.
So, so you did.
And we're just, we're, basically we're looking at it as an option and we don't even know if it's going to go. People are going to be interested in it. We don't know what's going to happen with it. So we didn't want to, you know, do the whole project that way. It'd affect parking and all these other things and then we didn't even know if it would work. So if people would want to do it.
And so you're aware that if somebody, let's say you leased out the six units and to convert some of that loft storage area to residential units and any other units would have to come back to this?
That's correct.
Commission, okay.
Yeah, we understand. We have to get additional permits for it, just like for the signage or any of the other things.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll also add quickly, typically we do see projects where they get essentially less permissive. So if, if they decide that, you know, six units, live work units doesn't make sense for them, they could decide to drop that down to two, to continue the onsite security. But, you know, it maybe doesn't make sense to have the other four and just turn that back into, to storage. They would be able to do that within the parameters of what you guys are approving today.
Right.
And did you guys have any other questions about the underground basin? It seemed like you guys had a lot of kind of concerns or, you know, not really fully understanding.
I believe I have another question right here.
Yeah, just an interesting concept. The, with the live-in units, it, that does meet code? There is no variance required whatsoever for that?
No, so we, we do have provisions for live work units. They're called caretaker units within our development code. It's an accessory commercial use.
I just wanted to make sure that that was in there, that that is acceptable. And if they came back and wanted to retrofit all of those units, that, like Dennis said, would have to come back, go through the permitting process and all of that, right?
Yeah, there would be some other steps and then certainly because they're going to have to work with the water district on their final development agreement and improvements, that may have some other more largely, large ticket items. And so it may create some challenges that are unforeseen at this point, that may preclude that. But it was more of a concept of, you know, not every contractor, you know, is starting out and has the need for a bunch of different stuff. And so it was kind of a, an interesting idea of, you know, the entrepreneur trying to start out and really doing it. And so we thought it was a, a cool concept to see whether or not there's any merit to it. There is live work in other kind of more urban spaces. But this is certainly kind of a unique, unique approach, but certainly permissible in the sense of the caretaker unit in our code. But yeah, whether or not it is successful or if it's not taken advantage of, then, then that will also play out too.
Very good. And one, one last question. On the ingress and egress, there's only one, correct?
Correct.
On the front of the property, there is a gate. Is that gate always closed? Is it only for?
No, so it's only after hours secure. Basically, the gate will be remain open and then we'll have Knox box and then there'll be the onsite manager too, so.
Then we'll close it all down after business hours?
Correct. So we want to keep it nice and clean and secure and that was another reason for the, for the reason we wanted to do the variance on the west side was because we were afraid that if we built 10 feet off and then the new, you know, the other owner built and say they built right on property line, which they're allowed to, now we've got this 10 foot alley that's going to be a collector of trash and possible transients and whoever, you know, whatever else. So we really wanted to try to alleviate that problem for us, the neighbor and the city.
Thank you. Appreciate the input.
So you guys had mentioned that there, you're basically getting approval for the six units. And then if it doesn't work out and he doesn't need all six and then he reduces it to two, what happens if he has somebody after it's done and they say, you know what, I want what this other guy has and I want the live-in unit now? Is he allowed to turn it back into three of the builders? You have to get approval again?
As long as it's within what you guys approved or less, then we're able to approve it. As long as they don't go above what you guys approved.
So basically above the six?
Yeah, so if they go for seven, then we have to then do an amendment to whatever the approval was, so. So we can go down, but we can't go up.
And in my understanding, it's a little trickier to, to do something like that too, just from talking with our, our fire inspectors and our, our building inspectors. There are things that they have to do because of the kind of mixed use concept where there are fire separations and things like that that they won't have to do for the storage room, but they will have to do for the studio. And so I would, I would assume that unless it was really, really popular, they probably wouldn't.
Correct. And it also, it also significantly reduces the size of the warehouse space or the workspace where they'd actually make money. Because if you guys look at the floor plan on there, if you're interested, it shows the access and the separation that's required on that floor plan.
Hard to see up there.
So on the first floor here, you can see, see that aisle way, there's a door that swings. So the dash line represents the overhead door and then there's a door that comes, exits from the warehouse into the one hour corridor there. And then that one hour corridor is for the office, the restroom, and then the upstairs. So that separates the living or that occupancy from the warehouse occupancy. You can see on the second floor here where the stair goes from the studio apartment. And if you see the one on the opposite side is a typical storage one, so it's, it's smaller. You see that? So the one on the left has the apartment, the one on the right does not.
Other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you very much.
Okay.
All right, do we have any public comments on this item?
No, we, no, we did not receive any.
Okay, our last opportunity to ask staff or the applicant, any other questions? Go ahead.
Just a quick question that came to mind. On emergency, this is per code. So I assume that fire trucks, emergency ambulance, in and out, there's only one. That was looked at by staff?
Yeah, so the fire marshal did review the site plan layout and because of the loop design that's in it, they're able to get to the, to the front of the site where they need to, to get to.
So if there was a fire in the back unit, fire truck could get back there?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and so just to kind of add to that, a typical aisle way is 26 foot in the code and we're providing 30. So that kind of.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, then we will close the public hearing and bring back the discussion to the commission. Questions, comments? Do we have a motion? Okay, make a motion that we follow and accept the staff report on the recommendation for this project. Okay, I think they would want you to read the case number. Would you like that read into the record, Ben?
Let's see, case number 23-088 slash 89. Is that it?
CUP.
CUPARCVAR.
VAR. We have a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion of second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries.
All right.
Okay, I will be recusing myself for item number three. I appreciate if you come and get me afterwards.
Do I need to move over or like?
I think you can stay at your normal seat.
All right.
So item number three is a land use compliance review and major variance of a 50 foot pylon sign that provides signage for a future tenant onsite, including digital fuel pricing. With the proposed variance to allow for an increase in structure height and a separate 10 foot monument sign limited to five tier fuel pricing structure. So we have any?
Thank you, Acting Chair.
Oh, there, I gave it.
That's, that's exactly what I was.
You want me to do the whole thing for you?
That's exactly what I was going to say. The applicant, SG Opal, has provided, as you mentioned, land use compliance review and major variance for the review of 50 foot sign. It is located at a, an existing site that is currently under construction. It is a commercial center on a 3.41 acre parcel at Oakland Road in Colorado. The general plan designation for this site is service commercial with vacant neighborhood commercial to the east. Service commercial with a non-conforming, single family residence to the west. To the north is the floodway and to the south is the freeway corridor specific plan. It is currently designated as open space, but a, an update to the freeway corridor specific plan is underway and that is subject to change. A little background about this project, I'm sure you guys have driven by Colorado and Oakland and seen some construction going on. I'm sure you've seen people asking, hey, what's going on there on Facebook? Case number 21-026 was approved by a city council and includes an approval for a unified commercial center that includes a development agreement that is in effect, that provides an increased TOT contribution, a transit orient. Transit? Occupancy. Transit occupancy tax contribution for the city for the future hotel on the site. I'll add that the commercial center includes a hotel, a fuel station, car wash, quick service restaurant and office space for the applicant's corporate headquarters. Following the initial approval, the planning commission approved the architectural review for phase one, which is currently under construction with the first phase estimated to be complete by July. They're starting to get that siding up. It's getting very exciting. The L U C R component of this project, as mentioned in the previous project, any new freestanding sign does require planning commission review and approval. And so there are two signs that are being reviewed, one monument sign associated with the fuel station pricing as well as a freestanding pylon sign for the, the site advertising for all tenants and additional fuel pricing. The two signs renderings are shown here. The monument sign is 11 feet tall with the cap and nine feet wide. It includes cash and credit pricing for four different fuel types as well as the.
I had to write down what DEF is.
Just DEF.
Yeah, and DEF fuel. It includes the pricing information per state requirements for fuel stations. Essentially, as you're driving into a fuel station, you need to be able to see what the price is that you're going to be paying once you're in there. The sign will be internally illuminated and consistent with the overall development and the area dedicated to the fuel pricing is not included in the square footage of the sign. The freestanding sign is a 50 foot tall and 245 square foot of signage, sign and is designed to match the monument sign as well as the overall site and is the subject of the major variance that we'll be discussing. The variance request, the applicant has made a variance request with draft findings contained in the agenda report centered around the lack of visibility along Oakland Road, given the vegetation and topography, the placement and height of the sign allowing for visibility to the freeway off ramps, as well as the signage being in scale with the approved and future hotel. Here you can see, or you cannot see, a flag test that was performed just last week for this project. The boom lifted the sign to the 50 foot height and you can't see anything given the kind of general curve of the road as well as the buildings that are on the site. And then, yeah, the visibility is extremely limited coming from the more residential and less commercially developed northeast portion of the city, kind of coming from city hall, moving towards the freeway. And the natural topography and trees limit the view until approximately the intersection of Colorado and Oakland Road. And the applicant's goal is to advertise to patrons coming from the I-10. The goal again is to provide visibility to the freeway off ramp traffic. The height of the sign will allow the applicant to advertise to traffic exiting the I-10. Other property owners have been permitted variances to advertise to freeway traffic, including the Sabre project, which is about a block and a half away from this project. That includes a 45 foot tall freestanding sign and you have a Gateway project which included a 55 foot tall sign. A smaller sign would not provide visibility as the topography and the placement of the site is, is really designed to provide visibility to the southwest. You can see here, it's a little tricky, but right there and right there is the boom and where the sign is and it's just kind of cresting that hill there. The third component that the applicant is proposing a support of a major variance is that there will be a taller building. While the architectural review for the hotel has not been processed yet, the applicant has provided preliminary renderings, which are seen on screen. The taller building is a three or potentially four story building. Kind of fluctuating right now, although the CS land use district does allow a height of 45 feet for the main structure with allowances for towers and other features to exceed that height by 50% and will result in a building that is taller than the freestanding sign. We've got a couple of site photos that I had provided earlier. This was the flag test, again, coming from the city hall, kind of going towards the freeway here. Very limited visibility and then again, exiting the freeway here where you can see the fuel pricing. As a part of the processing, notices were sent to all adjacent property owners and one response was received from the San Bernardino Flood Control District with conditions for any potential work within the flood control channel. As a note, there is no work as a part of this project proposed within the channel. And it is staff's recommendation that you approve the public hearing in totality number 250005. subject to the conditions of approval, including the supplemented conditions as requested by the San Bernardino Flood Control District, and is contained in the agenda report, that you adopt the major variance findings as contained in the agenda report, that you find the project is exempt from CEQA pursuant to section one-five-three-one-one and one-five-three-oh-five for accessory structures and for minor deviations in land use of the state CEQA guidelines, and that you direct staff to file a notice of exemption. The applicant is here, if you guys have any questions, staff is also here to answer any questions, and that concludes my report.
Okay, thanks, Christian. I don't have a light on this, but I think it's on, isn't it? I do have an ex parte disclosure to make. I have talked to Alex Patel on the phone maybe a month ago regarding the, this project, that it might be coming up. I have not seen any plans or actually reviewed anything before we got the package, so. And it was just a general conversation with Alex. So, are there any other ex parte on this particular item? Okay. And, any questions of staff before we turn it over to the applicant?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, I hope I didn't jump.
No, please.
This, this seems like an incredibly tall sign for that location. If you scroll back to your photos where you guys did the flag test coming off the freeway, that one's fine right there, in the bottom right corner of that, that picture, you can see where, where the sign will be. My, my concern is that, we all know what signs are. There are these massive LED signs, they're bright, they produce a lot of light, and I, I understand you want to capture that traffic coming off the freeway, because that's gonna be the only direction you really see it. But is that light and reflection gonna hit those homes to the north and to the east of where that fi, the sign would be facing? You can see, you can see on that bluff where the, those trees are. There's also homes up in there, so are they gonna be impacted by the, by the sign?
So, as a kind of general performance requirement, because there'll be LED lights, there is a kind of candle output that they are limited by pursuant to our development code, and so they can't be light glaringly bright just because our code doesn't allow it. So if they are overproducing light in terms of that, then we would certainly have to have them adjust it and dim it down or modify the sign structure in some way to, to bring it down to a much more kind of muted design. And then certainly, I think part of their kind of channel letters and stuff like that is also meant to help, kind of help diffuse some of the, the total light output that's being generated by the sign as well. But I think their sign company can also, as part of, their team can provide a little bit additional information about their LED specifications, too.
I, I can also add that the sign is proposed to be about right here. The hotel, which is gonna be a three or potentially four-foot structure, is gonna be right here, which is also a little bit higher than these parcels over here, so. Not that it'll completely block it out, but it should minimize any kind of.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not so concerned about the parcels there to, to the west. My, my understanding is that's all been deemed commercial since before the city was even incorporated. My, my concern is that it's gonna, is that light gonna reflect onto those homes? The direction is kind of wonky on there, but it's to the north and to the east, going, going upbound Oakland Road. You're gonna see those homes on the bluff in there. Are they, is it gonna impact that?
So like the homes, as you go up Colorado and kind of on that, that side, would they? Yeah, the light output itself shouldn't be that's, that heavy war, shining like a bright light add to it. They will be able to see a sign structure there, just as they can see the freeway and other activity happening down, downhill, but it won't be, they won't be seeing like a red shadow being cast into their house or anything like that, just because the light output won't be able to, per our code, won't be able to be that bright.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other? Please.
And speaking of lights, is there a limit on colors? You mentioned red, is it only gonna be red and green? Is there gonna be white, like a bright white?
It will be the colors that they have kind of shown on here. We, as part of kind of the First Amendment kind of provisions or the Reed versus Gilbert stuff, we really can't get into some of the sign content, just the location and placement, but it'll be based on the ultimate tenant and their kind of colors that they've chosen. I do know as part of the Freedom Fuel that the applicant's business has, he does utilize the red and blue kind of motif with it, and then, then it seems like some of the different tenants that he may choose may have their own specific color specifications. They may be subject to change if a business changes over time, too.
And could you go to the CEQA request to be exempt for those two items?
Yeah, so the staff's recommendation is that we, I totally got you, Jeff, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, no.
Yeah, staff's recommendation is that we find this project exempt because it is an accessory structure to a commercial use, and it's a minor deviation in land use. It's the fifteen-three-eleven and fifteen-three-oh-five exemptions.
So if approved, what are we actually approving in that statement to exempt from CEQA?
Uh, so. If you guys approve this, we will file a notice of exemption. So there are, Ben's gonna get into this actually in a bit, which I think will be very helpful. There are exemptions to CEQA, so the most common one that we use is the category, categorical exemption thirty-two, which is an infill project, which is a site that's smaller than five acres, but there are other exemptions to accessory structures. I think it's a limited change in land use, I think like by twenty percent or twenty-five percent for schools. There's some really specific ones, and then there are more broad brush, but this is for a modification in general, like the major variance or variance in general would be a fifteen-three-oh-five if the project isn't subject to CEQA, or isn't subject to a full CEQA review. If we're using an exemption, you'll see the fifteen-three-oh-five, and then the fifteen-three-eleven is the.
Is for the accessory structure, so normally a detached sign.
Not an attached.
Would be something that falls under the fifteen-three-eleven. And so, any freestanding sign that we have a proposal for, that if it's not tied to a bigger project, or then we just have to group it with the bigger project analysis. So an example, the last hearing we had, the sign wasn't exempt from CEQA review because the whole of the action, that project went through the initial studies, so the sign was reviewed as part of that whole project. In this case, the sign is being proposed as its own separate individual action, so then that falls under fifteen-three-eleven, and then the variance request itself is a deviation from our code. So normally, kind of the base standard height is twenty-five feet, and so then that's where the fifteen-three-oh-five is, the deviation from that standard. Increasing the height doesn't necessarily introduce a significant new environmental impact, so it's not gonna create new gas emissions or, or vehicle trips or create new, you know, biological resource impacts that is unique because it's only modifying the height of a sign that would already be allowed, and so that's, that's what the exemptions are referring to.
Okay, and then part of, interesting, you brought that up. This is the second time we've come up to a sign, and there's multiple instances here to justify this one because they're using other signs that got major variances. It was three or four for this one that they're using as a previous exemption, and they're asking for one here. Are we gonna review the code? Is there a code review coming up for signage in Ucaipa to see, or are we gonna?
Yeah, there will be efforts to look into the development code. We are gonna be, we are working on comprehensive development code update, and so as part of it, we will be tweaking our sign code as well. And certainly, some of it is spurred by this, but a part of it is our sign code is very old, it's very antiquated, the layout is atrocious for staff and sign company professionals to understand. And so we will be modifying it anyways. It does take some effort, just because sign codes fall under a whole bunch of kind of legal pitfalls, but that is something that we will be doing, and so right now, our kind of effort is to triage the best we can with what we have, and then essentially work through those, those issues as we move forward.
Is there a timeline? Do you know?
The comprehensive development code is probably gonna be a year and a half or approximately, approximate effort. We keep running into delays because part of the effort is being grant-funded through a state grant that SCAG needs to give. The Southern California Association of Governments is giving money to our local regional agency, and they have not signed it, even though they were supposed to have given that money to them many, 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 many months ago, and so we are waiting, they should be giving it to us, but it, all the cities in San Bernardino County are very, very frustrated that we have not received the grant money that we were guaranteed by the state to do this for, and the state has also asked why we have not gotten the money that we were supposed to have gotten. And so, but that's a, a separate bent for another day, and I can.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I appreciate the detail.
As soon as you asked, I was like, oh, great, here it goes.
Thank you.
I have a whole soapbox I can put down on that one.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Ben.
Question.
Yeah, so the names on the sign, two questions. Somebody used to ask me, is there gonna be a McDonald's there? I could say, yeah, because I saw a picture that had McDonald's on the sign.
That would be a better question for the applicant, but my understanding is that's just indicating a quick-service restaurant. I actually asked if there was gonna be a McDonald's there, and he told me no, so maybe he's lying, I don't know.
Alright, and then I see a Hilton, so is that something I could say, yeah, there's gonna be a second hotel, and it's gonna be a Hilton?
Also, probably a better question for the applicant, when I had asked him, he said Hilton or something, and I guess there's like a star rating for hotels, and.
Okay.
That's kind of the brand, you know.
Is there, uh, there's no construction on that building right now? No pad or slab or?
The pad is, is kind of rough-rated, so there is the spot for it. The applicant has been working with, and he can certainly go into more detail, with the different hotel providers. They do work with a number of ones, so they do have the portfolio that does include Hilton as an example, and so. And then as part of the development agreement, it does specify some of the minimum requirements for whatever hotel shows up there, and so, so you won't see like a motel of low caliber show up there. It will be something that does provide good quality stay for, for those that are visiting Ucaipa, so there is at least that, and, and our goal will be, as, you know, partners or stewards of that permitting process is to help them through that step and bring a good tenant to Ucaipa.
So the actual pad, the, the square footage or whatever, the dimensions of the pad, if that building was three-story, if it's four-story, there's more rooms. If it's three-story, would that, what percentage, how would you compare that to, say, the La Quinta? How big a hotel are we looking at here?
It would, in terms of percentage, if it goes to four stories, it would be about the same room count as looking to, if it's three stories, it would be about sixty-six rooms or so. So it'd be just slightly, probably about twenty-five under or so.
And this whole thing would be another presentation to Planning Commission when they get to the point of figuring it all out?
Yeah, once we get the final architectural package and any changes to the, the site plan that may be necessary for that effort, that'll come back at that time.
So we'd be two, three, who knows how long down the line before we might see a second hotel? I mean, there's no, no clarity on that, right?
There's no ETA other than, there is some timelines in the development agreement, so there is some kind of checks and balances that, that fall along with that, and so we continue to work with the applicant on that and try to maintain a good partnership with all our applicants, too.
Cool.
To see these projects come forward.
Thanks.
I just have a, on the, the variance for the building itself, that would bring it up to what? Sixty-seven and a half feet, fifty percent increase? Is that right?
So the, it is a spot in our development code where it actually isn't a variance, but there is a provision in our development code that allows certain architecture features to go above, subject to land use compliance review.
So right now, it's forty-five feet?
Forty-five feet for the main structure, and then it can go and increase. You will see a small development code update, like a cleanup thing that will change that provision, because right now, as it reads, it says the building official can approve the land use compliance review for that height increase, it has never been done in practice, it doesn't make sense for the building official, and so it will change to the planning commission will be the one that approves that.
But it's a fifty percent increase to the height that's requested, right?
Yeah.
So the, the building's sixty-seven and a half feet, basically, would be the max based on this, and the sign's at fifty, so the, I guess my point is the building's actually higher than the sign.
Yeah.
So that's gonna provide some blockage, not to what you're concerned about, you know, or the concern of.
None the direction that was the concern.
But, but it does block it from the closest residents. I think those residents that are up off Colorado, as the crow flies, that's probably half a mile or pretty close to it, isn't it?
Yeah, there's some distance because of, of how far back the first house is on Colorado, and then the grade elevation change from the bottom of Oakland Road to Colorado is a pretty substantial change in elevation, too. I wanna say it's at least, I wanna say it was probably about eighty feet in change of elevation or something of caliber.
Well, I guess that would be my question, is can you lower the intensity? Because the concern is to have the visibility from the freeway. But on the backside, if you can lower the intensity of the, the output of the, the number of looms you're getting out of that.
To have that side more dim.
Yeah, because you're not, you're not trying to pull business from that side necessarily, so that might be a consideration to make it more palatable to those residents. Still be able to see it, but at least you won't have a glare from it. But, so with that all said, would the applicant like to make a presentation?
Good evening, Honorable Chair and Commissioners. I know you guys had a few questions. The lights at nighttime, since they're channel letters, you won't see the illuminated backdrop. You'll just see the numbers and kind of what the names are. So, in the evening time, if you're driving, it'll kind of just look like floating letters. You won't essentially have the light from, and the glare from the buildings. The brands we're working with, Hilton is one of them. I know you had that question. We're working with Marriott as well. I had a meeting two weeks ago at the city to bring them in and pitch them the site to show them, hey, are you guys interested? Do you want to do this? Our idea is to move forward within a year to two years. It's just planning and going through their process. So Hilton only approves fifty hotel sites in the state of California a year. So they're extremely picky with who they allow to kind of hoist their brand, and especially in what city they're putting it in. Luckily for us, they like Ucaipa, so. And then McDonald's, we put up there as a QSR spot. We're working with two under, two other national chains to bring in. Next week, I'm actually going to another conference to pitch this spot, and next to our Freedom up in Ucaipa, we finally connected the two drains, so I'm trying to package both of those to bring in some sort of retail in. And kind of hopefully, I want to bring something like a fast food restaurant, something we don't have. I love the burritos and stuff we have, but something unique would be nice. If you guys have any other questions, please. Oh, and, sorry, one last thing, the lighting letters, red, according to weight and measures for a county of San Bernardino, red or white has to be for gasoline, amber for eighty-five and green for diesel. So those letters, we cannot change, and no one can change those. So.
Okay, any questions for the applicant? Okay.
Thank you, guys.
How about public comment?
We received one public comment speaker slip, Brett Granland.
Good evening, Mr. Chair members. I'm here today, Brett Granland, one-two-six-one-eight, Third Street, Ucaipa. I'm here tonight to, just to speak in favor of this project for a couple of reasons. I don't know, some of you may know before I retired. I don't know, some of you may know before I retired, a long, long time ago. I I worked as a sales manager for the largest uh electric sign company in the country. Privately held Young Electric Sign, sold millions of dollars worth of these signs. There's a bit of a science style, you put them together. Uh, this one, it's calling out internally illuminated, but then it's also talking about channel letters on there. So when you get, this is a concept, basically, when you get right down to seeing which a building is and uh actually designing your sign so it works. People wanna say, well, put it somewhere where they can't see it. You're not gonna go spend a hundred and fifty grand on a sign and hide it so nobody can find it. The purpose of the sign is people being able to find you. As far as the intensity, the brightness, on the LED signs today, they have automatic dimmers in them at night. So they dim down so they don't shine in your eyes. They have to be brighter during the day to overcome the ambient sunshine, but at night they can be much dimmer. So that's a good looking sign, good looking sign program. Fifty feet is, quite honestly, it's not very big for a pylon sign anymore. Uh, most of the ones that I sold, oh Ikea Center, for instance, at Sierra and and the ten, all those signs around there were mine. Those are all hundred, hundred and ten foot signs, present many different uh different logos, different signs, but they set the size and the criteria for their signs. They want them all looking the same uh, no matter which way you go. Marriott, Hilton, a- any number of their brands, it all fall under the same umbrella when they're negotiating. So there will be some modifications, I would imagine, just to clean it up when you know exactly what you're building, exactly who's going in there and exactly what kind of sign you want. Your channel letters can be internally illuminated or they can be backlit. But you can't, not intrusive at all, you've seen those where the light shines into the background. So there's, there's different ways to to deal with it, when you get to who's coming in and where you're, where you're coming in. So overall, it's a great looking sign package and it's good for the city. You know, the one tax we get that we don't have to split up with everybody else is occupancy tax. That stays a hundred percent here in the city, it's the best tax we can get for the city. Please approve it.
Thank you. So, any other public comment?
Not at this time.
Probably don't wanna rebut that, so. Um, with that, we'll close public hearing and any other questions from Commissioners regarding this? I'll just say that uh, you know, it's a big project, it's a big investment that these guys have. I don't really know the Patel's. Um, I have met Alex once before. But I appreciate the project coming into town. And uh, and I know that from my background with development, like Mr. Granland said, there's some requirements that are necessary to attract the larger hotel chains for minimum number of units and stuff. And I'd much rather see a, a major ho- hotel chain have the chance to get that. And I think that includes both building heights, number of units, Ben, if I'm correct, and and the sign height and visibility from the freeway, so. So with that, that's all I have. Would anyone like to make a motion? Or any other further comment?
I was hoping somebody else would do this, but I'll do it. If I can find my note to make sure I word this properly. Uh, guys all caught me off guard here. Thought somebody was gonna do this, so let me see here.
Take your time.
I wanna get it right. Okay, I make a motion that we follow and accept the staff report and then recommendation for, it looks like SG Opal PLN PHE two-five zero-zero-zero-five.
Well, thank you. Second?
I'll second that.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Approved, any, well, any opposed? I saw everyone move, so none opposed, so approved. Good luck, thank you. So.
Can I get the chair back in or the vice chair?
Alright, so we will end um tonight with another um study session. This is really just a training for Commissioners on the California Environmental Quality Act. Um, kinda high level, especially since we did have our first initial study tonight. And so, kind of better equipping you guys on the ins and outs of CEQA. Um, it's a very complicated, very convoluted um piece of the planning process. Um, and so it can be kind of daunting, uh, can be very, a lot of just paperwork to to have on it. And so hopefully helps kind of distill everything to what you probably need to know versus um all the pitfalls that that you can avoid as well. Now, at its most basic purpose, CEQA is only to disclose and inform the decision makers, so it's you guys and City Council, of the possible improbable effects of a project on the environment. So it's not meant to uh, you know, tell you how to vote or anything like that, just to tell you if a project gets approved, this is what will likely happen to the environment with it. And so it provides analysis that can help solve the environmental impacts, but also does allow for a project to have environmental impacts. Really is more focused on you knowing what those are as part of your decision. Now, CEQA has been around for a long time, it was enacted in nineteen seventy by then Governor Ronald Reagan. And it was based on the Environmental Bill of Rights and also modeled by the National Environmental Policy Act that was signed by President Richard Nixon. Um, it has since really evolved through time, uh, really by um, a lot of it has been through uh lawsuits, have really modified it. So every project that gets kind of sued creates new kind of interpretations on components of how CEQA works. And so a lot of the implementation really stems from that. And so if you ever read certain details on or letters from attorneys, they will reference a lot of different case law, which may seem a little bit complicated. Um, but the basis of it is from the provisions and then certainly different amendments that have been done through the state legislature. Now, CEQA only applies to discretionary projects, uh, nothing that is a by right approval. So if it's something that is approved by staff, it does not trigger CEQA. But anything that comes to you guys as an example is subject to a CEQA review process. And a project results in the whole of an action. So if we are looking at something that is coming to you guys, we are looking at everything that is part of that decision and evaluating what is the change from today's conditions, not necessarily what the plan is usually and what will be happening from the project, both in the short term, so let's say construction, to the operation of the project, what will directly happen and what may happen kind of around there. And sometimes what will happen as part of the cumulative growth of the city as well um for certain kinds of uh environmental review documents. Now, there is a process for environmental review and we kind of touched about it kind of tonight is, it's kind of like a roadway. Um, first is you're driving along on it and you're on the highway for environmental review. First question is, is it subject to environmental review in the first place? Is it discretionary or ministerial? So if it's going to you guys, we know we're keeping on the highway first. And then the second question is, is it exempt? And so there are kind of two categories um that fall under that and then one kind of last category that plays into it. The most common one you guys will see in that, you know, we talked about for the example with the sign, is categorical exemptions, so it's section fifteen-three-hundred through fifteen-three-thirty-two. And it's topics of types of projects that usually have little or no environmental impact. And so they get kind of pushed out from uh additional environmental review. There is also statutory exemption, so there are things that are specifically called out by state law that says these are not subject to environmental review, you don't need to go through additional review and so don't worry about it. And then the last kind of category is um what's called the general rule that there's no possibility that this action has a environmental impact. And so you can assume therefore we don't need to do an additional review. If it's not subject to this nice exit for exemption, you're either on the highway for um an environmental impact report, assuming that there are significant impacts, or you're doing a negative declaration or mitigated, mitigated negative declaration where impacts are less than significant or can be mitigated to those. And so tonight we had a MND because all the impacts could be mitigated and so therefore we didn't need to do an EIR. Now, categorical exemptions are what we will typically see for almost most of the projects. Um, uh, they cover a lot of things, small additions, small structures, infill development, really streamline the process for a lot of different projects. Now, it is not always absolute or applicable, there are exceptions to the exemptions. And so um, as part of it, even as staff, we can say, hey, this is a small project, but if it's somewhere that is, let's say culturally significant, we don't get to fall in under that CEQA exemption. And so we do still have to follow um and go through additional review process, but at least gives us a good route. And then the negative declaration process is really determining um where we're going into a more further analysis, the difference between a ND, so a negative declaration versus a mitigative negative declaration, is whether or not a mitigation measure is required. So once you have one mitigation measure, it's now MND and that's the only difference between the two.
So hard to say.
Yes, it is a word jumble.
Just on the, on this project we saw tonight, uh, why would it require the full? Why wouldn't it be a negative deck or uh, since it's an infill project in the city?
So the, the categorization for the infill project, so section fifteen-three-thirty-two, one of the requirements is that it has to be on a project less than five acres.
Okay.
And so because it was five point seven, it wa- fell outside of that scope.
Okay.
And so that is one of the, the unfortunate pitfalls of.
They should have subdivided.
They should have carved out a little bit and so, yeah, unfortunately, some of those thresholds don't always uh make pragmatic sense. And so that was why they fell into the additional review.
I knew it was close to that, I didn't remember exactly what it was, but.
Yeah, and so that was, that was what pushed them over the edge. And then certainly conclusions are based on facts and the record. And then for MND, um, they are reviewed for the public review and comment um for a period of at least twenty days. And so um, we don't necessarily have to respond to public comments um that are received on a MND, but you guys need to consider them as part of your decision and then it is considered a draft MND until you guys officially take action on it. And then kind of the, the gold standard of the environmental review process is an EIR. There's a number of different kinds, including a standard EIR, programmatic EIR, which is used like, say, for the general plan. Or you may have subsequent EIRs, which is an EIR update to a previous one that was done. Um, it's very similar to a MND, but it's usually more enhanced. It covers cumulative impacts and there's some additional uh statutory requirements that go into it, including a thirty day notice of preparation, a uh scoping meeting, so you have to have a separate meeting to talk about. This is what we're gonna analyze, if you have additional input, let us know. And then the review period is at least forty-five day period. And then you also have to provide a formal response to comments um on that. And then you are considered a draft document and then you pr- provide a final EIR. And then it is all considered kind of a draft document until it's certified. Now, all the documents, so MND, C, M, uh, NDs, MNDs, EIRs, all follow what's referred to as appendix G of the CEQA guidelines. And so there's topics from aesthetics, air quality, biological resources, geology, noise, land use planning, wildfire, utilities, traffic. And there's a number of questions that are within each of these sections that need to be addressed um for. And then technical reports may be provided to help add substantial evidence to answer the questions with it. And really, the focus of it is to understand um the impacts. And so when we're looking at environmental review, we have what's referred to as a threshold of significance. So if we're above this, it's considered a significant impact and then we're looking at mitigation to bring us below. If we can't get below, we're at an EIR. If we can get below, then we can fall with an MND. And mitigation measures are really a way to either avoid, minimize, solve, reduce, compensate um the impacts and they must be feasible, have a nexus to the project impacts. And they really need to have kind of a who, what, why and when approach. So there has to be some sort of action that can be measured to make sure that they're done. And then all CEQA documents follow kind of the same format. What is the topic? What is background information that helps support what's going on? Your analysis, the impacts, any mitigation measures and what the impacts are after the mitigation measure is done. And then EIRs and MNDs all have kind of two different sets of analysis, qualitative and quantitative. So an example, land use, so if you're looking at um, you know, is it compliant with the plan? Um, it's gonna be a um, you know, it's gonna be a qualitative compliance. There isn't necessarily numbers you can crunch to say, yes, this is meeting the general plan. It's gonna more be a focused discussion about how it meets it. But air quality, you're gonna have actual technical model that provides numerical output and so that is qualitative. And so you'll be using models, site investigation, surveys and a number of other methods to provide that analysis. You may consult with other uh groups or tribes um to help provide additional analysis. And then um environmental reviews also include separate appendices that provide more analysis. So the, the environmental document that you see, which may be a hundred to eight hundred pages, is only the summary of some of the analysis, the technical documents may be more. I've worked on environmental documents that are, you know, eight hundred pages and then I have probably uh three thousand pages of additional technical studies on the background that go with it. And so um, it is supposed to be a public document, but sometimes it can be a lot to provide the admin record that's necessary for it. Um, usually we don't run into projects that are as complex that would necessa- necessitate what I've done before, but um, but they do exist. Um, one thing that is unique um um in today's world is traffic analysis. Most people are used to level of service, so how well a street does in terms of traffic um as measuring that for impacts. And so there was a state law SB seven forty-three that switched from level of service to vehicle miles traveled. And so level service really focus on the capacity, vehicle miles traveled focus on how land use and distance impact how we drive. Um, VMT is very complicated as an assessment and right now it's hard to mitigate at this point. Um, but because LOS is a less environmental issue, it's more of a factor of convenience. Um, and traffic studies by their nature overestimate traffic anyways. Each project assumes kind of the worst case scenario and so each project is always assessing the worst case and building up on it. Um, and part of it too is if you take an example of this street road, so nickname a strode, this right here is a level A service. It's also a lot of pavement that's not being used by anyone and so it's a large administrative burden for something that really isn't providing a lot of benefit necessarily. And so that's part of why the change happened, but we still use level service to make sure that uh we're not creating, you know, streets that we can't get through as well, especially for emergency access. And then environmental review has um kind of two different elements. Um, for MND, there's the argument, what's just called the fair argument. So if someone writes a comment and says, I think this might be an impact um because of this and they provide some background to it that makes sense, that can be something that turns over the MND. Can be based, fairly argued based on substantial evidence in light of the record that there is an impact. It's a very low threshold um that can trigger an EIR, doesn't necessarily need to be absolute or unequivocal. Um, but still a threshold that needs some facts, it can't just be a guess pulled out or a, a idea pulled out. It can't just be a guess pulled out or a, a idea pulled out from nowhere. And again, it is assesses impacts to the environment, which is also key for the argument. Someone can't just make a complaint about a project. It still has to tie it to the environment. And then substantial evidence is one where they can't just make a guess. They actually have to provide actual fact and, and reason to it. It can't be argument, speculation, or, you know, unsubstantiated narrative or opinion. It actually has to be based on more concrete details. And to overturn an EIR or an CEQA exemption, you need substantial evidence to turn it. So what's actually interesting is the exemption and EIRs need substantial evidence. The MND and NDs, which are in the middle, require a fair argument. So if you're on either side of the spectrum, your threshold to overturn it is a lot harder than if you're in the middle. Last kind of case is we as the city, we are the lead agency for the projects. If you're the final decision, then that means we are the lead agency, and so we are the primary decision maker. Then independent judgment means that you as the reviewing body, you are making the final determination. You have looked at all the information, and based on your determination, you agree with the facts that are provided. So we as staff can question what the applicants provide us. We don't necessarily say, hey, the developer says impacts are all great, everything looks wonderful, and we have to take it as gospel. No, we get to question it because we have a responsibility to make sure that we are making sure that the environmental impacts are appropriately addressed and needed to understand the project, and you guys as commissioners also get to do the same to make sure that you guys know what your decision is and are able to apply effectively. And then again, CEQA is a public process, is to disclose impacts. And so as part of all our noticing process for hearings, we'll always include some sort of action on the environmental review. And then most public comments will also have some sort of tie-in to CEQA. Again, like most projects or planning, you know, the Plan One-on-One discussion, most people don't show up to say, man, I really loved your CEQA analysis. It's really good. I loved it. I love your project. Usually it's there because they don't like the project, and then they use CEQA as a tool to further complicate things. And so one thing that we will see on occasion is what's called a document dump. So especially attorneys like to do this. Ten minutes before a hearing or two hours before a hearing, they will show up with three hundred pages of nonsense of documents saying, here's all our challenges to the document, here's all these additional information. It is merely to be an inconvenience. We will try to help sort through the issues raised, depending what the information is. We may ask for the item to be continued. It's not the end of the world if we have to, but if there's nothing of actual merit to it, then we will say we'll proceed on. But it is an unfortunate game that they play, and we just get stuck with it. Kind of a bad thing that is also important, EIRs have a lot of myths. People think that EIRs will stop a project, or that EIRs are only required for contentious projects, or that they will tell you how to vote on a project. None of those are true. There's also the idea that EIRs are more expensive, take longer, or could be more comprehensive than other documents. That is also not true. You can have an MND or even exemption with the same technical studies that an EIR has, as long as you can document what the impacts are and justify what your decision is. That's what's important. There's also been a term that's been coined around in Utaipa for a number of years called a four-season EIR, and that is simply not a term in the profession. And also that EIR will be bulletproof. We try to make sure that through our quality control, that it is thorough and comprehensive. But it is through that process that we try to bolster up that review. And then really, part of the CEQA process, and I use this absurd project hypothetical, because a lot of people think that EIRs or like the review process is that you can't deny a project that has big impacts. And so I use this example because it's kind of silly, is you have a project coming in, a developer wants to do a project that involves clubbing baby seals as part of one of the impacts that's gonna happen. Now, the environmental analysis says that, hey, one of the impacts we're gonna do is club baby seals. That's gonna be a pretty significant impact. So mitigation measures that we may determine is that the applicant may have to use wiffle ball bats while clubbing the baby seals. And so the question then is, will this reduce the impacts to significant or less than significant impact? Or is it still significant and unavoidable? Or is there any other mitigation measures that can be done to reduce those measures? In the environmental analysis, we can also make findings of overriding conditions. Does the project benefits outweigh the impacts? And so if there's other benefits to the project, even though we're clubbing baby seals, that can still be used for approval of the project. Or we can say, nope, it doesn't outweigh the benefits, and so we can still deny the project. The reality is, is that even if the project is doing something bad that we don't like, that doesn't mean that the project can or can't move forward. CEQA's role is only to inform you of what the impacts are. And so this is just a very outlandish example to really show that CEQA is only to disclose the impacts and provide the vessel for that decision-making. It does not have anything to do with whether or not the impacts itself causes you to stop the project or to move forward. It is just to help inform you of what your decision entails. And so CEQA isn't perfect. It doesn't advocate for a project, doesn't fit the project or solve problems. So going back to the Nolan and Dolan Supreme Court cases, is if there's existing problems that the city has, we can't use CEQA to fix it with a new project. Doesn't solve every outcome or provide the worst case scenario. And CEQA certainly isn't simple either. It has grown more complex as more lawsuits have changed it. And CEQA is also very complex. People view it as a paper tiger. Every project and location is nuanced, and so the rules, expectations can be very unclear. Court cases continuously evolve, the project or the, the process, and many people use it to stall projects. Labor unions, environmentalists, residents who do want a project, or even competing businesses will use CEQA lawsuits to like maintain a monopoly or to, to stop a project. There's even attorneys and avid, you know, other groups that use CEQA purely to win attorney fees and to get paid. And that's how they make their living. They don't actually care about environment. They just use it as a way to win attorney fees, and that's how they do it. And so it isn't necessarily for improving the environment, it's for disclosure. And so ultimately, sometimes it means that those with the most money can win, whether or not it's for a good project or it's to stop a project. And so sometimes good projects do lose out with the issue. There has been a lot of attempts to reform CEQA. Governor Brown had famously said it's, reforming it is the Lord's work. And former Senate President Darryl Steinberg had said that CEQA reform was, when he tried to do it before, was How to Make No Friends Act. He got a lot of pushback. There's still been a lot of efforts to do it, but really hasn't been that meaningful. And so it's very complex. And so again, CEQA applies to discretionary projects, so the stint that we can have more ministerial stuff, that helps to streamline a lot of the pitfalls for certain projects. And then certainly as us as staff, we try to make sure that our review process is comprehensive so that you guys feel comfortable with the information you guys are getting that is accurate and complete as part of your decision. And that concludes my presentation on California Environmental Quality Act.
Any questions for Ben? Staff?
Yeah, I have a question or a comment. That was great, very informative. Sounded like lawsuits to stall attorney fees, document dumps. That's disturbing. So, you know, two hours or whatever you said before a meeting. Is there a way that the city could control that to some degree to make it more fair and equitable? Because I haven't. For example, is this a document dump, this traffic analysis?
No, so this was just, we noticed that one of, like, two tables had incorrect signage on it, but the analysis was there. So we just wanted to make sure that we had the correct one in front of everyone. But as an example, the, the SG Opel project, when that went through for Plan Commission and City Council, there was a group that had an attorney present that did document dumps for Plan Commission and City Council right before the hearings. And so I had to filter through it. I think when it went to City Council for the development agreement, City Council was concerned enough that they ultimately continued the item so that, that we could prepare for it. The information there was a lot of nonsense in terms of what was actually being asked for, like in terms of their analysis. It really didn't make any sense. And so like for staff, it's easy to refute, but it still takes a lot of time. I can think of the, the collections at Crete Side when that went through. There was another attorney group that did a document dump. The person that was running that whole thing was a disbarred attorney that literally has had cases against him for essentially doing this type of extortion thing. And so when you look, search them, you could see multiple articles about the same thing. And so it is unfortunately a problem of that. It is part of why I don't work in that field as, do an environmental plan, because it is very frustrating. I like this side a lot more because I get to work with the community and not deal with that as my daily interruption. But it, it is an unfortunate flaw of how the process has moved where it's meant to help disclose stuff, but people exploit it in ways that it should not be.
You know, it, it just seems to me, maybe it's common sense or whatever, that this should be stopped. And one of the ways to stop it that might prevent these attorney fees, extortion, whatever you want to call it, is to come up with a timeline, like a day or two days or something on these document dumps, whatever you want to call them, that they can't do that anymore. And that might discourage the people from doing it, and then they don't get their fees and it, you know.
I think what you're looking at, you're looking at legislation.
Well, let's get some legislation going then.
That's, yeah, at the state level.
Can the city of Utaipa recommend to the state?
You know, we certainly have, you know, in terms of like the project, public comment, we try to have the cutoff at three PM. But certainly if something comes in, you know, we'll have to kind of deal with that. The problem is, is that the state has been trying to, but there's so many different groups that, that want to, like, that acknowledge that there's, that there's flaws with the process. But there's so many groups that also benefit from like that. And so like, it isn't even like a partisan issue like one side or another. It's just the ability to get consensus to actually execute, I think, the reform that needs to happen just has not happened. And so you've had, you know, in terms of CEQA reform, you've had both in the Democratic and Republican side of the legislature, both trying to do stuff, and they both get cannibalized by different groups and, and interests that just hammer them down.
I won't belabor the point, except to say, it seems to me, we could set a, a goal, a timeline, do that as a city, get challenged by somebody, and then just proceed up the line. And if it costs some money, I'd imagine there's a whole bunch of cities with CEQA concerns that would support what we're doing. It'll go all the way up to the legislature, and then they have to do their thing. I don't know. I just don't like it.
Yeah, like Ben was saying, there, there are groups that use CEQA that, that do have a lot of power, for example, labor unions. CEQA reform could be seen by them as kind of an attack on them, so there's a lot of politics that go into that. That the part about limiting how close someone can provide notices to-
Yeah.
The issue is that, you know, we, we provide that avenue so that neighbors and, and people who live near a project can provide comments as well. And so we're not just stopping one person, we're stopping everyone. And so that's kind of some of the complication. And then as far as, you know, what other cities want to do, some other cities like that development is more difficult and challenging, so.
Other questions? Comments? Any announcements?
We will have a meeting, the second meeting in May, so we will be back here in two weeks.
Okay, and how many items do you think we'll have on that agenda?
We will have two special use permits, and then we will also have a general plan conformity determination for the city's capital improvement program, which is required prior to the adoption of the city's budget. So it's something that you guys have to do for us to formally take it. The draft budget goes to City Council on Monday, so they'll provide input. And then once that has been provided, then you guys will take action that is consistent with the general plan, and then that goes back to the City Council. And so you'll have three items, so it'll be a relatively, nothing too heavy. And then we'll have probably at least one meeting in June as well.
Okay, any other announcements? Comments? We're adjourned.